I think, Ms. Sedkamp, you mentioned something about being open-minded. That's something that I would like to see the entire council, you know, do is be open-minded to other conversations, have an open dialogue about the conversation, and see if there is an opportunity to arrive at a consensus rather than just dismissing, which is, you know, what seemed to happen here, dismissing it right away. Even back when this started in August, there was people saying, absolutely never will we have chickens, I don't care how much we talk about it. That was the consensus then. So, open-mindedness would be a good thing for not just this issue, but the other issues that are going to be presented as they move forward.
Can you wrap?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Mike Chisenhall?
First of all, I'm against the chickens. I don't think enough people know about this issue and the ramifications of what will happen just because if this passes. I don't think, I think you're rubbing up a can of worms because, first of all, it's going to be very, very difficult to enforce. You're never, people are never going to abide by all the rules and regulations, they never do. So, you're just creating more issues. You're creating something that you're going to have to try to fix because people are breaking it. So, you're creating more work. There's not enough people that know about what's going on, so I think there would be more people that's against it. It's not a, it's not a city to, that's conducive to having basically farm animals in the backyard. And I think if you start this, I'm just wondering what's going to be next. So, I'm totally against it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Laura Tallent?
Good evening. I told you I'd be back. Let me begin by saying, Mrs. Fettie, excellent presentation. I love your enthusiasm. I would have liked to seen that energy directed maybe towards something else, but nevertheless, you're right, you can't make legislation based on what might happen, but you can make informed legislative proposals based on what's happened in other areas and based on, you know, experience with chickens. Since my last meeting, I would like to say that the CDC, the World Health Organization has now identified 12 superbugs, one of those being salmonella. It is mutating at an alarming rate and is becoming more and more antibiotic-resistant. About 30 to 40 cases of salmonella go unreported for each case that is reported. And by the time you get sick, you're in such bad shape that, of course, you end up at the doctor's office. We can inoculate chickens against salmonella, only antibiotics work, and according to a report published last week, we are getting more and more antibiotic-resistant strains. I'd also like to point out, I have looked at the NPIP website, I've read through the certification, it's not foolproof. And there are some things that it doesn't, that it doesn't discuss. Additionally, one of the problems that we have, and I want to address F. on your proposal about sanitary conditions, I have to speak about the unpleasant subject of poop. And unlike a dog, when you walk it, it might poop one or two times, and you can clean it up, chickens poop approximately every 15 minutes. And their poop also includes their urine, so it's quite watery and you can't clean it up. Most guidelines say a chicken coop should be cleaned out every two weeks. So, in that two-week period, poop is accumulating. It's accumulating in the straw, it's accumulating in their food, it's accumulating in their So, I don't see how that can be sanitary. And poop is the primary way that the chickens transmit their disease. Doesn't take much to walk into the coop or the backyard, you pick it up on your feet, and guess where you take it next? Into your house. There are a lot of things I could tell you about chickens based on my own personal experience and the research that I've done. Like, the hens are noisy. If there's no rooster present, hens will crow, it's part of animal behavior.
You've got 30 seconds.
One hen has to step up and be the dominant one, and she will crow. The Northern Kentucky Humane Society does not take surrendered chickens, they will, however, take strays. So, I think that's a problem we can see happening, and it does happen. Additionally, let's see, no roosters.
What is your timer say?
Are you calling my time?
Uh huh.
All right, well, so tell me anyway, how does that make it sanitary? How can that not smell? Nobody wants to be downwind of a chicken coop on a hot, muggy summer day. Again, and I have to agree with you, I have a personal problem with somebody who either knowingly violates an ordinance or doesn't do their due diligence to find out what the ordinances are, and then one of us reaches out and say, hey, we're going to help you with that. I think it sends the wrong message.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff Nicely?
Local business owner, own a lot of property in the city. When I first heard about the chicken ordinance, I started doing a lot of research and checking online. But before we get into the chickens, something I do have a little bit more experience with are the dogs. And if I, I took a little exception to the, to the Labrador Retriever, so let's just straighten it out. They're not the most deadly dog, right? We all laughed when that was brought up. They're the second most deadly dog. We train retrievers to be therapy dogs. They're very lovable, they're a very popular breed. I don't know of any, in the research that I've done, any city that has any ordinances against Labrador Retrievers. But if we're really concerned about public safety, we should consider that. Because Labrador Retrievers rank in the top eight for vicious dog attacks that create bodily injury, and they do account for the second highest total of dog deaths, or people that died from dog attacks in 2016. So, I don't think we should have ordinances against them. I love them, I think it's a silly idea, but I think it's a silly idea to regulate the chickens also. After doing some research, the CDC does have a lot of information, like was previously brought up, but they, they quote, "stop far short of discouraging backyard chickens," but rather they encourage safe practices. And what was asked is about poop being poop, actually, they do have ways on their website of maintaining chickens in a safe, clean environment. What was not brought up, I watched the people comments from the last meeting, and it was brought up that 895 cases of salmonella were reported in 2016. However, a great many of those were from the owners of the chickens themselves, from kissing their chickens and cuddling their chickens. The CDC, as well as common sense, suggest do not kiss your chickens, do not cuddle your chickens, or kiss any other animals that can cause disease, no matter what animal you're talking about. And when you want to talk about salmonella, 133 cases of salmonella in 2015 were brought on by pet turtles. So, if we're going to be making ordinances about salmonella, we got to include turtles in those too.
Turtle growls in southern states.
I'm sorry?
Turtle growls in southern states.
These small turtles were not, but you had your chance. You had your chance.
Is his time up yet?
No, he's got 30 seconds.
And finally, in closing, I kind of agree with the first person that spoke, some of the comments that I heard were kind of embarrassing, I think they were shameful. You're wanting to punish the whole city of Earlanger for your anger against one person. I haven't met her, I'll call her the Chicken Lady, but I could tell your anger when you talked about her, and I just don't think that that's right either. I think you're elected to represent everybody, and it sounds like you asked for a survey. This young lady did a survey for you, you got the results that you didn't like, so you say the survey was no good. I think the survey, with modern technology, I think the survey was well-written, was well-distributed, and you got your results. And the results say that the majority of people in the city want chickens. They should have them. Thank you.
All right, Ann Isaac?
I would withdraw.
Okay. Diane Brown?
I don't want to talk about chickens. I do want to clarify something, though, and I would like to offer a little support. This was the first I'd heard of the FCC having an issue with the Kenton County Planning Commission's regulations on small cell towers, so I want to make sure that that's clear. But I also want to distinguish if PDS is responding, that's because they work as our staff, but Kenton County Planning Commission is who made regulations regarding small cell towers, because that is solely in the purview and legal precedence of Kenton County Planning Commission.
Okay. Can I clarify this?
Yes, please do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that it was, there was some confusion, okay? Number one, it wasn't the FCC wanting to take over. That's not the case. They had cell companies that went to the FCC, and they want to restrict local planning commissions from enacting regulations because they're saying that, in fact, they should be treated basically like large cell towers, and I don't know the exact term of what that is. So, what they were doing was getting questions about, or the questionnaire went out from the FCC saying, how do you do this, basically? What is your procedure to do it? What is the timeframes involved? Because these cell companies were trying to make the argument that, in fact, it was hindering their ability to build these, make business, and do things like that. So, it wasn't that they were trying to say, no, Planning Commission, don't do this. And I think the response, and I'll send it out to everybody, I think the response from PDS has been very good, and yes, they did it, I think, on the behest of the commission.
Well, I would like to offer, I would be happy to come back with a report on how we came up with those regulations. We had actually worked with two local vendors who were coming into Northern Kentucky to install those. Otherwise, they're subject to our large cell tower regulations, which are highly expensive and would actually cause bigger interference with these going in. The objective of those small cell towers is to offer more depth of coverage in areas where you already have coverage. So, now that everybody is streaming on their cellphone, and they're watching Netflix, and making calls, and making, all on their phones, this gives you enough bandwidth to be able to handle that kind of coverage. So, I just wanted to offer that as well. I know our executive board had worked considerably with the vendor to get those regulations. We were one of the first, though, in the country. There are only a handful of communities that are dealing with this so far, so I'm not surprised to see there's been some pushback. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, there's nobody else on the list? Did anybody else want to speak this evening? All right, so we'll move on.
So, we're going to open the floor now to finish the chicken thing?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I want to say, I, my best quality and my worst quality is I see both sides of every issue, which can make decision-making hard sometimes. But that also means I'm very open-minded, and people know that I've been on the fence about this since last year. I did a lot of research, I talked to a lot of people, I even formed a forum on my Facebook. I talked to approximately 100 people this past two months, three months, to get their input. It was either via my Facebook forum, phone, in-person, instant message, whatever way people wanted to communicate with me and felt comfortable about voicing their opinions. Also, it took a little while for the survey to go up. Then, when it did go up, people procrastinated. By the time they did want to go fill it out, many of them told me it was already closed down before they could fill it out. I don't know how long it was up, but, you know, that's their problem, you know, that they didn't get in their time, but I just wanted to point that out. Out of the approximate 100 people that I've heard back from, only three that I talked to were for the chickens. Seven didn't care either way, or were okay with it if they followed all the rules on Jessica's proposal. The rest did not want them. They gave me reasons, and I'm, these might not be my reasons, but I'm going to give you the majority, the most popular reasons that people told me why they didn't want them. And if not in that order, I'm going to go actually the least on a, salmonella was one of them, because chickens, not only carry it, but whatever they walk by, it goes on, you know, the leaves, the trees, whatever. My daughter had salmonella when she was 20 months old and almost died, so I know how devastating salmonella is. Some people, of course, pointed out about, well, I'm not even going to bring this up. Okay. Some people pointed out the gateway to more farm animals, that was another concern they had. Some pointed out, it's a trend, you know, people want fresh eggs, they want, you know, and then they're going to get bored, and then they're going to let the coop, you know, just sit there, and it's going to cause more blight. That was another concern a lot of people had. With that, I'm going to add, it's a catch-22. To keep the chickens in a coop, so they're not flying in other people's yards, and to try to respect a neighbor's privacy, then you have the other issue that you're not really getting free range eggs anymore, because now they're cooped up. So, that's an issue that I just thought of tonight, but here's the two big ones. I talked to some realtors, and they said they would not disclose to these people about the chickens, because they said they would never be able to sell the house. So, that I thought was kind of interesting. If it was disclosed, or let's say it went the other way, and a new buyer had to sign whether they wanted the chickens or not, if they signed that they didn't want the chickens, then they're moving into a neighborhood where they're already going to have negativity because they made these people get rid of their chickens when they moved in the neighborhood. The biggest one, and this is probably my deciding factor here, is most people told me that they like their neighbors, and if their neighbor asked them to sign, they would sign. But they would be resentful, and they wouldn't really want the chickens, but they wouldn't want to cause problems with the neighbors. And, you know, I thought about that myself. I thought, if my neighbor wanted me to sign, I probably would, but I grew up on a farm, I don't want chickens anywhere near me. But I wouldn't want to, you know, cause conflict with my neighbor, not that my neighbor, my neighbors are wonderful, well, except maybe that one, but...
Everybody says.
But I just, I just feel like I can understand why they want to please the neighbor, but then that resentfulness, and then just, you know, that was a big deal. And what was my other one? Oh, the PDS map. I don't think it took into account for long yards. So, you might have 100 yards here, but like, my yard's an acre, and it goes way back, so I maybe only have 90 here, but I could put them chickens back here, and it's not going to be anywhere. So, I think it would probably increase how many houses could actually have it too. But that's just, that's my, kind of my survey and how I came to my decision of why. But I was very open-minded, and I did do a lot of research, and I think Jessica did an excellent job, and that's all I want to say.
All right, thanks. Mayor. Renee?
I just have one really short comment. And Day, I want to thank David Hahn for looking this up for me. I didn't forget, David. In 2009, was a gentleman who lived on the corner of Division and Lake, who wanted to build a rock wall on his property. He wanted a safe place for his children to play. He actually built the wall, and then was told he could not have the wall. His property was on a corner, and there were a lot more restrictions on that. In the end, he had to take his wall down to comply with the ordinance. The chicken issue is along the same vein. It's easier to ask forgiveness than permission. The only problem with this issue is that there was never a forgiveness plea made. And whoever said that most, most of the people in the city wanted the chickens, most of the people on the survey wanted the chickens. 179 people took the survey, and there's 18,082 people that live in the city of Earlanger. So, that's less than 1 percent. Okay.
All right. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, Randy, go ahead.
Yeah, I would also like to just speak briefly on this. I was leaning in favor of this ordinance change at first, and I did some research on it as well. In fact, I was even leaning it enough that I actually gave Ms. Fettie some suggestions on how to tinker with the ordinance and improve the language. But the more I looked at it, I think this is one of those ideas that looks good on paper, that's going to have a lot of problems in practice. And partly, I base it on, I interviewed some code enforcement people in other cities that have these ordinances, and specifically talked to a few people in Covington, because they have an ordinance that allows these. And basically, what the code enforcement officer there told me was that this is something the commission passed that looks really nice, that's a code enforcement nightmare, that they're having constant problems with chickens getting loose, that getting around, and it's just very difficult for them to enforce. And I see some things in the ordinance that I think make a lot of sense, and I think you've crafted probably the best ordinance possible under the circumstances, but I just think it still has some difficulties with it. For example, the idea of having the NPIP certification, I think that's a good requirement. But suppose the original chickens they buy die, and they replace them, how are we going to monitor to make sure they're still NPIP certified as opposed to getting them elsewhere? I think that's a problem. Your ordinance says that we're not, they're not going to have any preventable offensive voters, which certainly implies there's going to be offensive voters. So, I don't know how you have preventable versus non-preventable offensive voters, and, but still, it implies there's going to be offensive voters there, which I think is problematic. I think the neighbor consent idea is, is, I think it's well-intentioned, but I think it is a problem as well, because I do think it could cause neighbors to be opposing each other. And I did talk to a number of people, because I was, I was surprised by this, because I thought if somebody approached me, and I didn't want chickens next to me, I'd say, no, don't have chickens. But I talked to a number of people who said, I would probably consent, but I wouldn't want them. And so, I do think we do have the probability of having neighbors pitted against neighbors. So, I think, you know, this is probably, you know, as close as you're ever going to come to getting a reasonable ordinance on this, but I just think the problems of enforcement are just, just too great, and I just would be against changing it because of that. It's not that I'm closed-minded or anything of that nature, I think I showed you that I was very willing to discuss the issues. But I just think, based on the research I have done, it brings with it a lot of problems. And I also want to defend Labradors, but I'll do that later.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right. So, moving on, we've got, the next item on the agenda is bids. Mrs. Hoffman, are there any bids this evening?
No, sir.
All right, is there any old business, any unfinished business? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Does anybody have any new business to discuss?
Are we going to vote on the chickens?
We're going to take a straw vote or whatever?
Um, yeah, sure, we can do that.
Well, Frank wanted to say something first.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, Frank had something to say.
My suggestion, in order to put this to rest, would be, Ms. Fettie has developed an ordinance, certainly, but it's not in a form that can be adopted by council, it needs to be put into a more legislative form, I would suggest. So, my suggestion would be that somebody make a motion to direct either Mr. Gatlin or myself to prepare an ordinance in conformity with Ms. Fettie's suggestions. That'll either pass or it won't pass. If it passes, we'll prepare the ordinance. If it doesn't pass, I think that would be the end of it.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense?
No.
No, not to me.
So, what are you saying is that we would vote tonight to direct them to prepare an ordinance?
We just need to put this to bed.
Okay, just listen then for a second.
I mean, I don't see any sense in making this ordinance if, from what I've heard people say, to me, it's an expensive, the city doesn't need to go through. I think we just need to take a straw vote.
Can I, let me clarify this, because I don't know if anybody heard Mr. Wickman or not, because I know he was moving back from the microphone a little bit. But what he's saying is to entertain a motion to have one of the attorneys draft the ordinance. That, that, that motion would have to be seconded, and then that motion would have to be voted on. If that motion is voted down, then the attorneys won't do anything.
Good.
Okay? All right, so this isn't doing anything other than, all right.
Sorry, Frank, misunderstood.
Okay, so entertain a motion. Okay, we've got a motion on the table, a second by Mrs. Fettie. Any discussion?
Please, no.
All right. All in favor, let's do a roll call vote.
Y'all do know what this is, right? Okay? This is a motion to have one of the attorneys write the ordinance.
Yes.
Okay.
So, if it's a yes, you write it, if it's a no, you don't.
Yes.
Correct.
I'm sorry. I had to do that, because I thought there was confusion.
Okay, can we do a roll call, yeah?
Mr. Cahill?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Did you say Renee? Who'd you say?
Ms. Skidmore.
No.
Ms. Kyle?
No.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Mr. Nicely?
Yes.
Ms. Cahill?
No.
Ms. Pitts?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Montgomery?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Fettie?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
No.
Ms. Sedkamp?
No, ma'am.
All right, motion failed. All right, then, moving on to legislation.
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance of the city of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Earlanger Ordinance Number 2443 by identifying additional occurrences prohibited thereby. Those additional occurrences are at the end of the copy of the section attached to the ordinance, and they begin in paragraph 2.17 and go through 2.25, all of which are underlined. Second reading.
All right, second reading. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as read? Motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fettie?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nicely?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No? Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sedkamp?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next one is an ordinance regarding the annexation of the Lions Park. First reading.
This is an ordinance annexing certain unincorporated territories within the county of Boone. That doesn't sound right, does it? But it is.
Oh, it doesn't. I'm going to go, wait.
Within the county of Boone, Kentucky, and contiguous to the present boundary lines of the city of Earlanger, Kentucky, and defining by meets and bounds the territory annex. By summary, this is a consensual annexation of 23.977 acres owned by the Earlanger Lions Club. The consensual agreement was signed off by John Donhoff as representative of Earlanger Lions Club, and the description and survey is attached to this ordinance. This is a first reading.
All right, thank you. The record will show that we had the first reading this evening. The next one is an ordinance regarding the annexation of city property.
All right, this is an ordinance annexing certain unincorporated territories within the county of Boone, Kentucky, and contiguous to the present boundary lines of the city of Earlanger, Kentucky, and defining by meets and bounds the territory annex. This is a 7.597 acre tract that the city owns, which is in Boone County. It is attached, a plat and survey done by VIOX, and this also is for a first reading.
All right, I said the city clerk, please note in the minutes the first reading of this ordinance. Next one is a municipal order regarding surplus property.
It's municipal order number 03-07-17-01, a municipal order of the city of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, making the written determinations required by KRS 82083 for the sale or other disposition of property owned by the city. And this is a little unique, and I don't know if Mr. Hahn wants to talk more about it, or if council's pretty familiar with what's going on here. But this is a transfer without compensation to habitat of the properties on 3409 Cowee, 3410 Cowee, that is under KRS 81, I'm sorry, 820832, transferred with or without compensation for economic development purposes, which shall include but not limited to real property transfers for the elimination of blight. It is also to put up for public auction the properties on 433 and 437 Division Street, and also for electronic auction the Yamaha ATVs as indicated with the VIN number and the attached attachment.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Motion by Mrs. Sedkamp, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next one is a resolution regarding the Kentucky Homeland Security Grant for technical rescue equipment.
It's resolution number 03-07-17-01, a resolution of the city of Earlanger, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to make application for and upon approval to enter into an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to facilitate and administer the project and to act as the authorized correspondent for this project. This resolution also establishes procurement... This resolution also establishes procurement policy for Kentucky approved, Kentucky Office of Homeland Security-approved projects. And as discussed in my attorney's report, we will be striking out the language that represents, references 45A in the Model Procurement Code, and the version that is going to be signed by the mayor and attested by the clerk will include the language as it relates to KRS 424130 and KRS 424260.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt? Motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Mrs. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Mrs. Kyle.
There was one other thing that was on the agenda. I don't know if I can bring it up now or not.
Yeah, sure, what? I'm sorry?
The hiring event.
Oh.
Is it okay that I bring it up now or?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I think so.
That's okay. I just wanted to reach out to you guys and ask for your help. So I talked to Mr. Hahn today about the hiring event. We've kind of talked about reaching out to the bigger businesses in our area to try and get some type of sponsorship for this event. We have a name for it, it's called Ready Set Hire Earlanger. I created a logo for it, so we're going to be able to really brand this event and get the message out. And I want to ask for your guys' help, you know, anybody that's interested in assisting me with this project, all the assistance would be wonderful, so.
Can we discuss it at the committee meeting?
Yeah, of course.
In depth?
Of course.
Did you reach out to Sani?
Not yet, not yet. We talked, we just had our preliminary talk, it's like in the infancy stages, so you just, that would be a great, a great one to do. Maybe one of the sponsors or something.
Yeah, what we talked about at the committee meeting, maybe we can find ways to help her out with it and stuff.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Sounds great, thank you.
Sounds good, no, don't apologize.
All right, so I think we did have a motion on the floor. Motion by Mr. Blankenship to adjourn, second by Mrs. Kyle. Does that still stand? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.